Okay Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brenman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Mannigan.
Here.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Jaheer.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve amendment 416, 2019.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No bills moved, can I? For the moment, for any public input on non-genue items, any public comments, discussion, anything like that.
Um, against an issue I've raised up, I've talked to a couple of council leaders about it, and I would ask the rest of you if you could take a look at West Fourth Street. On the issue over there, and as we're looking at doing streets in town, um, that's one that I would hopefully move up the list. I know it's a weird situation, and the street isn't wide enough, but um, both of us who live to the south, on Third Street, and Kingsbury, and a little bit of Oaks, the water situation is just really bad. All the water from those yards because of the fact that nobody can put water all towards the street because it turned the street into mud. All the sun pumps and everything are to the back, and it's all coming out of me. Our yard at, at times, you know, over the last two or three years, we've had a little bit of floods, so about half a water in our yard. Our neighbors, to west of us, they're basically flooded. The next neighbor, her basement is flooded, and it's still flooded. She can't get it dried out. And it's just we're getting all that water. And I guess if that street was done, so that water could maybe go out to, you know, the storm sewers. But I know it's a, I know it's a weird deal, the street isn't wide enough, I also know it's, it's not a popular one, and that, um, the people that live on Ramona are probably not going to be interested because essentially that's their alley. It's not really their street, so I'm sure they're not going to want to participate, but I guess I'd just ask if you guys could take a look at it. If we could get it on, on the list somehow, get something done with it. Um, it would certainly help to remember people in our neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you Brian.
Thank you Brian. So Theresa, the, the people that live on Ramona, their backyard runs up to Fourth Street?
Yes.
Is that spelled out in our, in our ordinance? How does that work? Cause, cause typically you have frontage and you have, the corner lines have signage, but how's it work with people with the street?
I'll have to look to see exactly how it's worded. I think it's just says frontage, so.
So the people that live on Ramona wouldn't have?
We probably, we probably could assess them, yeah. I'll have to look at it for sure, cause I'm pretty sure it just says frontage.
Is that the only street in town like that, Craig?
Um, well, you got some like Jennifer Dry, that's the same situation up in there, but um, Fourth Street's only 2060 wide, you'd almost, if you did it, you'd almost be forced to have no parking on either side or in one way going through there.
And that's pretty much the way it is now.
Cause the fences that are there, if you look at the fences, the property line is another five or seven feet from there yet. It's, the property line's a foot off the ground, but that's where I know.
No one parks on the street now, because if they did, they're, it'd be impossible to, to get through there. Thanks.
Has there, has there been any movement in, with the neighbors to get petition going, start?
Um, I don't think there's much interest, and I don't believe that there will be any.
I had a gentleman come in about a year ago, one that lived alone there, and asked for a petition. Um, he never turned it in, though he couldn't get others to sign it, but he tried to.
I, I've asked a little bit to some people, and I've gotten very negative.
Sure.
We're more than happy to put our sun pump hoses out in the back areas and let the water go the other way, then the.
I think it's fine doing that.
All right, thank you Brian. Any others? All right. Well, we're at 7:05, so we'll move to our 7:05 public hearing, first reading of ordinance 666, rezoning applications submitted by CNC Ventures to rezonate a portion of Crestwood Edition, a natural resource to regional commercial. So, any questions Theresa, you've got this laid out in your packet. City got representation here?
Yeah, so basically, um, city received the application from CNC Ventures, and this is on Crestwood Edition. They would like to rezone the property, basically that abuts the interstate, and there's a map in your packet, it's that brown area. It's currently, it's NRC, which is kind of the city agglan or parkland. Um, they want to rezone it to regional commercial. Their preliminary plan actually shows this chunk as commercial, so it coincides with their preliminary plan. It just was never zoned that way from what was annexed into the city, so. Yeah, they submit that petition and are asking the city to rezone it.
Make a motion to approve first reading of 666. Questions?
Motion, second, discussion?
Larry? Might take just a podium real quick, Mike. Um, the, the only concern I have, and if you can address it with me, uh, is I've seen your blueprints, you know, for, for that area. And, and the one thing that comes to mind for me is buffering. Now, the blueprints I saw three years ago were going north and south. Do you still kind of plan on going with that, that type of setup with this, if this is approved tonight?
Kind of what we're doing here is we want to get some signage up, and, and in order to do the signage properly, it needs to be zoned, the commercial, with the way it's zoned now, if we want to put a sign up there for, uh, development, we are not able to. The plans are basically to keep it like we are, but I, I didn't want to have to plan it, design it out, because there will be, and, and I forgot to mention this at planning and zoning, you know, because we had some residential, and then some multi-housing, and then it went into commercial. So, we'll probably have to come back as, as we start to do a design, and, and I now have to find another, a different engineer, but um, as we start to move forward, we will have that buffering, but for right now, we want to put a sign along on our state, you know, for the development there.
Sure, sure, I'm a hundred percent on that. So, yeah, so as long as I mean, because when I, that's my word, and, and I had, uh, I had folks that, in the, uh, back, the Central Valley Church area, that had concerns about buffering, and, and uh, so I just, if nothing else, wanted to let you know that, that, you know, I, it would be great if we kept that in mind, even though we're going north and south, you know, we, you know, to somehow make that happen.
Definitely, and, and that's something that's very important to me, is the buffering, and, and how it comes out to the commercial, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm hoping, they always say there's a certain way, and I'm, I'm kind of ignorant when it comes to this, but, you know, if you, if you zone it a certain way, it's harder to go back another way, so that was going to be my question to you guys, is, you know, if, if we do this, just an overall commercial, can we go back? And, you know, there'll be areas that will be residential, and then we'll go into the, you know, like the four complexes that we have out there, and duplexes, or tw- whatever you call them, but.
We all know how engineering fees, thanks to Mr. Stockholm, the Stockholm's over there, kid already, uh, and, and, you know, but, you know, to me, it seemed like it would be easier to buffer if you're, your street you want east-west, or have a main thoroughfare, and of course going north and south, and, and and all I ask is to kind of keep that in mind, uh, so we don't have any issues down the line. Okay?
To answer your question, I don't think there's going to be any problem with the motion, but.
All right, we have motion and second, we have more discussion? Not a vote? Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mannigan?
Yeah.
Thank you Larry. And we're at 7:10, we have our 7:10 public hearing, first reading of ordinance 667, rezoning applications submitted by Western Meadows, rezoning portion from residential to light industrial. So, got this one laid out in here too, maybe you just want to give a quick update on that Theresa?
Yeah, so this is a rezoning too, and if you look in your packet, basically, um, this is out in Western Meadows Development, and it'd be their far southwest corner, and it's the dark purple that you see on the map is the lot that they're looking at rezoning. Um, right to the east of there is the current light industrial lots that they have, and then to the north, it's zoned residential, but none of that's been flatted out or done anything with yet, so, um, to my understanding, um, the developers and owners have got some inquiries about getting a larger plot of land for industrial, um, so they're looking to rezone this to light industrial as well, then they can finish off their whole industrial loop in there. The only concerns we had with looking at it, when me and the engineers looked at it, was that originally, you know, this whole development originally was residential, and then we asked them to put in the light industrial, um, but this area here has designated park area in it, and so we talked with them, Mitch met with them about a week ago, Monday, and they've agreed to relocate that park area into their Phase Three of their development, which would be right to the north, so city is still getting some dedicated parkland with it. They'll just incorporate it into the Phase Three. Otherwise, it seems to make sense right there, next to the current industrial.
Make a motion to approve first reading of 667.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? A vote? Brenman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
Mannigan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
We're supposed to call you up there, just then.
All right, we've got second reading of ordinance 665, force change to city-owned ordinance, so a lot of these blocks. No changes since first reading? Motion to discussion?
Make a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 665.
Second.
Discussion? Brenman? A vote? Mannigan?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next one, review approval for new award for class track one of the block two edition.
And this is the plat brought into the city. Um, this area is actually just right west of town, it's not in city limits, but since we have plating jurisdiction within our growth area with the county, all plats within that growth area need to come to the city for approval first, before they can move on to the county. So the planning and zoning zone, reviewed this at their meeting last week, and approved it, and recommend approval to the council. Um, this is property that is the law cabin just right, um, along Highway 38 west of town. It's, it's right to the west of there, it's a piece of property they're plating, moving housing eligibility there, so it meets our plating standards.
Make a motion to approve class track one of block two additional. Second.
Discussion?
This still, I mean, this is still, we don't have a say over it, it's still the county, right?
Well, we have a say. This, we'll go to the county after us. If we would deny it, it stops it, then they can't even go to the county.
But the county can still split it.
The county can still, yeah, then it's got to go for county approval.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, no further discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
All right, next up, special event permit Hartford Downtown Market. And basically removing a farmer's market.
Yeah, Kelly Tusha was the one who submitted the application, and I don't see her here.
Nope, I don't.
Um, but what she, when she brought this in, and what she expressed to me is that they want to, um, we, there's been a farmer's market being held up by the building center the last few years, and she, I think I talked with Lisa, but she would like to move it downtown here now, um, the last Thursday of every month. Um, have it down here in the evening, so it'd be right on First Street, to south of their building. Um, we'd block, they would like to block off, that's why it's coming to us, block off that First Street from Main to their alley area there, and then in the street have vendors set up. She would like, you know, approval for, you know, the May through October, so it'd be for every Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, um, having it five to eight thirty, block off there, and trying to coordinate vendors to go in there, and set something up downtown for this.
I call Lisa Helbig to the podium. That's, that's okay with you?
Yes, very much.
Cause otherwise it'll make you stand up there.
Do you see any issues Craig, um, kind of a recurrence like that?
I don't, none of that block, it's, to me, it's one of those blocks that should be eliminated, turning in green space, so.
Cause you want plus a block.
What Mitchell did down, down there, it really turned on nice.
I bet. Okay.
That's a bit nasty. Need more water.
Less snow.
Completely that much green space.
Maybe we sell to the elevator and then put their building there.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
Just throw that out there. I noticed on the application, it says five to eight thirty, plus set up and tear down. Shouldn't be more like four to nine thirty?
And they, and they have in the paragraph right above it, they actually want the street shut down from four to nine, so that'll take care of the set up and tear down. Um, the marker would actually run from five to eight thirty.
Good.
Make a motion to approve special event permit for Hartford Downtown Market.
Second.
All right, discussion? Brenman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Mannigan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Keel?
Yes.
All right, now we've got visitors, Lisa Allen, request to incorporate Hometown Christmas into a five oh one C. Five oh one, pretty simple.
Correct. So, uh, kind of piggybacking on what Jamboree Dates has also done, to, uh, talking to the accountant and trees that seem like it made sense, especially with the donations that we receive from the businesses for this, and the charitable donations that we make out from this, that it makes sense to have it be a five oh one C three, to be able to allow those contributions and deductions to be a hundred percent deductible. So, we are asking for your permission to have that happen, and also request assistance with the fees that may be entailed to make that happen.
Basically, do like we did with Jamboree Committee.
Correct, yeah.
And some other committees that relate to that.
Yeah, literally the city, you know, incorporated the bike and road travel committee, even the pool committee in the downtown, so they could be their own entity, we could filter funds directly to them, um, they would come and, you know, request funds from the city every year if they wish, but it would also allow them to be able to receive donations on their own, own as well, and then those people donating, that could be a deduction for them fully. Um, right now, people can't, you know, Hometown Christmas is basically a group of volunteers, I mean, it's not set up as, that's why we filter the funds through the chamber, because, you know, we can't just give money to individuals, you know, without kind of having an entity to give it to, so. Same way when people donate to them, they really can't have a, count it as a donation, because it's not an entity, you know, legal entity set up, so they're taking donations, it makes sense that people to ask donations, can donate to them, and then people can count that as their, on their tax returns.
Do you remember what the cost of that was?
I don't, I was going to look that all up today, and we had a bit of a.
But your Leah knows.
Challenge happen in our life today, so I didn't get to do that.
I want to say it's right around five hundred dollars. It's what, yeah, we lasted, and I want to say it's right around five hundred dollars, the attorney fees and the filing, and all that, dude. Cause they, they do have to settle bylaws and follow them. It, it would be less than that, I would think, it wouldn't be any more than that.
When I talked to James, that's kind of what he thought too, but he wasn't for sure on the attorney fees, what that would be, so, and I didn't get a chance to on that before the meeting.
I guess the only other question I got is, do you, you've got a pretty regular board or group that you work with?
We do, this year, we probably more than quadrupled the size, and I'm hoping that they all return, and we continue to add to it, so, um, probably have ten members that have been pretty active on our committee. So, we will have to formally become more formal than we have been, um, but yeah. Initially, I thought because it was put out to either be more under the chamber and have this become a chamber event, which really sounded kind of appealing to me, but the more I talked to James about it, a big part of what we want to do with the event is the goodwill part of it, and that seems to be most easily attained by setting up the five oh one C three, so. So that's, that's the main reason why we're looking to do that. Right now, the event, it's usually runs about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars, we get eight thousand of that right now, is what we've been giving from the city. So, without those donations, we'd be coming back for a lot more from the city, so. Plus, we can give the, the donations, which we can't do with the city funds, and we need that with the donation part of it, so that's important to me for the part of the event, so that's probably the main reason to request this designation.
All right, do we have any motions?
Motion to approve the request for incorporation for Hometown Christmas to five oh one C three, and for the city to pay for documentation thereof.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Do you have what you need for the minutes on there?
Is it five oh one C three, or five oh one three C?
There's a typo there, I'm sure.
Five oh one three C.
I was saying, was there a difference between the two?
Yeah, just typo.
All right, any further special?
I should look at, this would probably take effect twenty twenty. Cause by the time, they said by the time they get everything set up, and we've already received the funds for two thousand nineteen, so we would look at this then for for two thousand twenty twenty.
All right, we vote?
Right now, it's operating under the chamber?
Right now, it falls under the umbrella of the chamber, but really only for fund pass-throughs, because we, we get our own insurance and everything, but technically, it's under the, we've been operating as if we've already been one. So we either need to move it completely out of the chamber and have a chamber, or to do this, but it seems like this may.
No, I'm on board. Other questions? All right, Mannigan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
We also have, this is kind of under Lisa's section here too.
I make a motion to delay the family pass, to be on hashtag, just going to Hartford. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't need to interrupt you. No, no, we need to donate a lot. Oh, that's for other people figuring it out. Ain't that what you say, Marcus, other people figured it out yet?
All right, you ready?
Jeremy, what was the second?
Second on that one?
Thank you.
Ready?
All right, we're ready.
Another one, doesn't ask already. All right, so, uh, in your, in your bracket, let's do the wrap-up, we could have a nine-one-one hang-up, thirteen civil paper services, two more stolen cars. If people would just take the keys out of their cars.
They're really stealing what, what the keys are left in?
Well, that's the most common.
That's the one like borrowing.
Especially when they return it.
Let's ask Scott. Does somebody steal your truck when you leave the keys in it, Scott, or they borrow it?
You know, my hearing aid just went out, say that. You know, they borrowed it, yes.
I don't think I remember the car thieves that did not think the same way.
To give you a little backstory before you got here, Scott had a truck that was borrowed, and it was such a piece of crap that they left it like a block and they had it away.
Yeah, they did. Well, because the brakes weren't working, and they ran through a fence. That's my excuse, I'm sticking with it.
Uh, we had eighteen warrant services, that's an increase of ten, ninety-eight traffic stops, an increase of thirteen, six animal complaints, and that was also an increase of seven medical calls, that's also on the uptick, increase of three, uh, one DUI arrest, uh, two frauds, four check well beans, likely check well beans have decreased a little bit. Seven silver tickets, hard to imagine when it's raining outside, but I think we're done. I'm not going to say it, cause we had one pull-up alarm, I believe that, may have been at the coffee cup again. Eight juvenile delinquency, and I anticipate they may increase with kids out of school. Twelve disorderly subjects, increase of eleven, so that's starting when, when the one weather hits. So does the booze, so that would probably increase. We had seven family disputes, an increase of six, three accidents, one shoplifting, and one rape. I don't have any information on the rape, Deputy Hours was investigating that, so unfortunately, that may be involved around the school. Uh, toll calls for service were two hundred and ninety, increase of sixty-four, to give you an idea how, how much things are increasing. Here in Hartford, it's about ten calls for service per day. Uh, so I had a complaint of juveniles racing on railroad, sounds like a smart plan. So I have varied my hours and focused a little bit more on railroad, I had a kid getting out of school today, doing nineteen miles an hour over the fastest speed limit. And it's kind of slippery out there right now, loose gravel. So I took care of that. One thing I wanted to, to offer definitely to the council, we offered it to anybody who wants, who doesn't have a felony on their record, is our ride-alongs. I encourage any guys, if you or gals want to come for a ride-along, for an hour, thirty minutes, twelve hours, I encourage it, just strap in and hang on. Uh, but it's a good time, I really enjoy it, and probably good for the council to, to see exactly some of the stuff that, um, we do it on a yearly basis.
Is it in the front?
Absolutely, I wouldn't put it in the back. I mean, if you want to sit in the back, it's, uh, it's pretty confined back there. It'd be my job, my honor, protect you, my own. I might take you up on that. I just need a couple days' notice, I have forms I always carry in the car, I just have to get approval from, from the boss, but it's, I mean, they, I don't see them ever denying it, unless again, you have something on your record that you might, we might not want.
Maybe I could take you around town, we could stake out some streets.
So, how are you finding? Sorry.
Never really.
Oh, I didn't want to cut you out. Um, how are you finding things down in Mecalsen, cause I know you've been down there.
I have.
Increased your patrol down there, how are you finding things down there?
Deputy Hours said something very funny to me today. He said, "You should see all the black marks coming up to stop signs." I said, "What's that from?" And he looked at me, kind of cross-eyed, "It's from you forcing that stop sign there." So, I mean, I think it's getting better, absolutely, because I've made a lot. So, I mean, I think it's getting better, absolutely, because I've made a lot, I know that traffic stop count doesn't really account, doesn't seem to account for it, cause it is an uptick. Um, but I'm definitely making less traffic stops.
Okay.
Um, so Mickelson, I mean, it's definitely getting better, there's no doubt about it, because, uh, I had someone come out three or four days ago, one of the residents there. And, uh, he said, you know, thank you for being here, he said, sometimes he still sees people roll through there, but they used to drive through there a lot, people would lose sight, so.
Um, I've had a few constituents call me because they've had a chance to meet you. I don't know how else to say that, is that the polite way to say that? When I ask them, I usually start with the question, did you or did you not go on the stop sign? In every case, they have said, yes, and I said, so then, what, what is our conversation about? No, a couple have said they thought maybe you were a little, uh, you know, I don't know what the word to use, rude? I said, hey, you know, he's picking you up, he's gotta be on his guard, and they don't like, you know, they don't like hearing that, you know that, so. But everyone that I've asked, when they've said, geez, how come they're enforcing the stop sign? I said, it's a stop sign. I said, we told, how come they're doing that? I said, we told them as a council that we wanted to up the patrol up there. And whenever anybody asks me in my neighborhood, and I don't know if you do it, Scott, but up in my neighborhood, Jeremy, I don't know if you do, I tell every one of them. If you run a stop sign up here, you're probably gonna run the chance you're gonna get picked up. So if you wanna run the stop signs, go right ahead, but you run the chance you're gonna get picked.
So. It's interesting when someone says that a deputy or an officer was rude, and then everything's reported. And I encourage anyone who wants to see a particular stop to, to look at it, because oftentimes, uh, it's a different story when you watch the video. Uh, today, I stopped a truck on Main at Tessa, we have plates on it, so I stopped him, he bails out of the truck and starts walking towards me. Oops, now has an officer, that, that's a problem. And he got barked at pretty loudly, and he got upset for a little bit, but then after I got him back in his truck and explained to him why. Cause I thought, oh man, my bad, I'm here from North Dakota, don't know why that matters, but, um.
It's a different world.
Yeah, maybe they let him run without plates up there.
It's a wild west up there, for sure. But, uh.
Oh, I understand, there's always two steps, I mean, you, you do have to take some of this stuff with a, with a grain of salt, cause there is always two, two sides to every story. And, you know, I know how I am when I get stopped, I usually flip a little attitude, so I can about imagine that some people flip a little attitude, cause I know I do.
Here's the problem I have with that comment though, Arden, because if, if they're running stop signs in their own neighborhood, they're, they're running every stop sign in this town.
Absolutely.
If they don't even respect their own neighborhood enough to stop, they're running every stop sign.
I would agree with you, Mark, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
And as far as speed, unless the, the roads or the weather's inclement, I'm usually, I'm usually not looking at people until they're doing like ten hours. That's when, that's when they want to talk to me at ten hours. They don't know it, but they want to talk to me. Um, so when, I mean, I've had, I was talking to, um, high school, one of my, our interns. She said that somebody in her geometry class said that, they have a word for me, I'm not gonna repeat it right now, they have a word for me, it's not nice. That, uh, pulled my daddy over for doing three over and he got two hundred dollar fine, impossible. First of all, I wouldn't pull anybody for three over, honestly, unless you're like one of your yarders, school kids, right? So those are some of the things that we battle as, as an organization, right?
Yeah.
We need a set of fines, so. But, um, anyway, so I'd love to have each and every one of you guys on a, on a ride-along, it's a great time. I mean, I love it, I mean, you guys might, he didn't say let me out after fifteen minutes, but, and definitely to the staff as well. I think you don't have enough to do it all.
They got, they got work to do.
They gotta punch out if they need it.
They could get on holiday or something.
Absolutely, double time.
But you have to sell site of town cleaned up, uh, because Part T has effectively become a large cul-de-sac.
Yes.
Some of our owner taking advantage of that, so.
And, and Part T is such a speeding road. If you're speeding on Part T, it's really not safe. And we'll talk about speeding on the signs tonight.
It's, uh, much better lit than it was.
Much better what?
It's much better lit at evening, at night, much brighter than it used to be, but still, doesn't fall down.
Oh, I know. You have any questions, Paul?
Any questions, so we'll keep moving.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, on our report too, we're gonna touch on high points, we got a couple, we got a bunch of action items on, so we're gonna jump over to recreational director report, Nate?
Yeah, mine's short, I don't have an official report this week, I'll have that for you next, um, meeting. Basically, tonight, I just wanted to get the application for sporting event permits, um, taking care of the past, um, it's very similar to the special event when we have just more sports specific and kind of a good starting point, um, to start a conversation when somebody wants to run, um, a sporting event that may, um, bring in money, basically. That's what we're looking at here, so it's very similar, a couple more questions, um, than the special event permit, but, um, I don't know how much else to say about it, it's pretty self-explanatory.
So this is just the application process, it doesn't waive the rental fees?
Correct, this is basically, yeah, the preliminary step in order to get to that, um, rental agreement, pretty much.
Would you approve the application for sporting event permit as presented, second? Discussion, you have a problem with this, Teresa?
No, like I said, it's very similar.
Quick question, so, so as far as, uh, the no alcohol usage, um, if, if by chance a year, two years from now, is this gonna be the template no matter what for a special event? Or just sports complexes, I mean, where, where are you aiming at?
This is a sports complex.
This is a sports complex, so, so, uh, let's say that, uh, um, you know, suddenly there is a softball, fast pitch softball team or something of that sort where alcohol is kind of commonplace, um, is this saying that, that, in no way, shape or form will alcohol be allowed on said property?
This application just isn't granting alcohol usage, so.
Yeah, it's basically clarifying.
It's clarifying that with this application, we're not granting it now, down the line when they fill out the other forms or whatever, and if they're doing the park, they can ask to use alcohol. Then you can okay that, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
This, this application just doesn't grant it.
Okay, thank you.
And this application does not need our approval, does it, once somebody wants?
No, this will just be used internally then with the staff, yeah, yeah.
So they wanna have one, it's basically up to him.
It's going through, yeah.
Any further? Motion approved. I think we already got, do you? So, you're in favor, Burnham?
Yeah.
Yep. Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Cause I bought another person, which is.
Yeah, yeah, one of the horses, A or B, A, B?
Do you have anything else, Nate?
Um, no, that's pretty much all I have, I'll have a lot more for you next meeting.
Alright, um, I'm just gonna jump into some of the more important discussion, the high points. Van de Mark Avenue Improvements Project, uh, they're pre-con, a couple weeks ago, construction began shortly after that. Working on some removals, uh, some of the utility water connections mostly right now. Things have gotten off to a little slow start with, you know, whether, you know, I guess obvious wet conditions, but, um, going alright so far. We have a payout, the first payout for that project on this agenda. And that essentially is just twenty-five percent of the mobilization cost, we don't have any of the work done yet on that payout.
I'd like to motion to approve the payout, case number one for construction on Van de Mark Road Project, twelve thousand three hundred thirty dollars and thirty cents.
Second. Discussion? Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
And then, before I jump into the next action item, um, wanted to just add, I guess, that there is some additional work, we'll probably see a chain order in the next, you know, in the next meeting or following meeting. There's some water services that we didn't really know about, I don't think anybody really knows about them.
Well, we kind of goofy spot, we kind of forgot about, Jesse remembered it when he marked them, and then that's what dogged us, so we are gonna be into that scope of it. It's down there by, uh, Dogger General actually is fed from that Ninth Street, which we kind of forgot about. Um, they're, they're stuffed up in there, and then, um, the apartments there are actually on the far east side of their property too, so we're gonna be into it, into them, uh, service lines by about five feet, so. We'll have to add them into the project, so, and there's also some fire hydrants that were shot and haven't been able to move them, so.
So the change orders to move the service lines for?
Reconnect them.
Reconnect them. To reconnect them, cause they gotta, they gotta know when the?
They will be, yeah.
They will be getting in with that excavation.
Yeah, there'll be new main there, so we'll have to re-tap down all of the main.
But now, we, it's their set off tonight, so.
Yeah, we're re, um, we're redoing a bunch of that, uh, water main at night going to the west, we're gonna get past the tower and all those other valves.
Oh, really?
So that way you don't have to worry about.
That's part of the Van de Mark project?
Yeah. We wanted to include that in the project so that if going west would get brought into it, we already had it covered as far as a bid item, something like that.
I guess I just don't remember any talk about doing the water hang-on, ninth, when we talked about that, did we talk about it?
I don't know if you guys ever, it was in the plans, that's like, so I don't know if we ever really discussed.
I must have missed that when I was going over them with a fine-toothed dog.
When we looked over the plans originally and that stuff, Mitch and Teresa, myself, sat down and we thought it'd be the best thing to do is that when they're in there digging now, the mobilization to eliminate, there's like two hundred feet of water main probably that's in there.
How much is the change order for?
We haven't, we haven't looked at that, yeah.
Give me a ballpark like Mitch does, ten thousand, a hundred thousand?
It's less than ten.
So we got, we got X amount of dollars in there for water main connections out here.
Yeah, there are, we've got a bid item for service for locations now, so there won't be any like hidden fees, it's already, they've already bid it out, I mean, they're, they're the same cost, yeah.
So it's part of the bid tag?
Yeah.
We'll add, we'll add quantity, we'll have the bid item set. And then, I guess in addition to that, there's also probably gonna be some extra gravel, I don't know if it'll be an overrun or not yet. Um, but night, we thought we could salvage most of that gravel on the, at least the north side, but as I've been working, that road's kind of falling apart on them.
What gravel?
This, this spring made it, yeah, there, there was enough to salvage while everything got mushed out and pushed up, so.
So I don't know if we'll do a chain order for that, since we already had the gravel item, so we, you know, if we get to the point where we think we'll overrun, we'll probably do a chain order at that point. Just to bring in some extra gravel and make sure that those kids.
And that's for, like, Pines Street going east?
Yes, east of Van de Mark, where they're putting their supplies.
Greenspace, Greenspace, Craig likes Greenspace. Got a couple guys who like to play golf. Very fun, that, like, long.
So then, my next action item is for, um, a proposal to do the Ninth Street portion from Van de Mark, you know, west to basically the highway thirty-eight, I guess. See our proposal in there, we, we estimated that work to, where did I get that from there? Construction estimate is around five hundred seventy-five thousand, um, and that's using a lot of the numbers that we already had in the bid. And it sounds like Sukup is willing and able to add that work in, if that's in the interest of the council. They might have some additional costs that they're gonna wanna tack on, uh, probably another mobilization cost or something like that. In order to do that, uh, and we would probably need, you know, a couple months to put the plans together and get it ready to build. So we'll be looking at later in the year.
Does that five hundred seventy-five thousand include the eighty-five, eight, eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars of engineering fees?
No.
No, I don't think it does, that's, the five seventy-five is just construction costs, right?
And does that cover contingency fees either, cause I have to have them together for the resolution? So total project, and they haven't got all the plans put together, so they don't, we don't got a final cost, but an estimate is about six hundred and seventy-five thousand, engineering contingencies and estimating costs.
I wanna be a devil's advocate here, um, and due to, uh, uh, I've lost confidence with Mr. Hago due to your update on, uh, non-agenda updates. Um, and, and I do not wanna look a citizen in the mouth, and, and we put that street in for six hundred thousand plus, and Hago sits on it and doesn't do anything? I'm sorry, Travis is in your wheelhouse, but, but, uh, you know, we, Mark and I have went through this horn with Mr. Hago before, and, and, uh, I, I just don't have the confidence that he will act, he will follow through, and, um, at this point, I'm gonna say on Ninth Street, with those numbers, um, I, I can't support.
I'm actually gonna, the bids that we're talking about, I'm gonna take a different avenue, and I'm, I'm not worried about Mr. Hago not doing anything with his property. My fear is, is that Mr. Hago can single-handedly tie that project up for far longer in court than anybody thinks he can. And if you don't believe me, you can ask city, city legal, because, uh, we danced that dance room for about six years. So we're looking at a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, and it goes through, and I would hate to guess that if he wants to fight it for fun, how much we're gonna pay legal to fight it? And if we don't fight it, then it's gonna appear that we just ran away with our tail between our legs. I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing the project, but I'm opposed to doing the project until we have a verbal from Mr. Hago, because in my opinion, when it comes to Ninth Street, we have the cart way in front of the horse. If I understand correctly, we can't move forward with the resolution until we, until we have actual construction documents.
Right.
And if I understand correctly, construction documents don't expire, they don't go bad, uh, they don't mold, um, so, if we spend this money, it doesn't like we have to spend it again.
For the engineering?
For the engineering.
Yeah, you would need to approve them to move forward with the engineering, cause we need at least preliminary plans, cause we need their plans to be able to show the public for this resolution and necessity. And so, we'd have to authorize stockwells to get those plans together for us, and hopefully they can, you know, I talked to Mitch, kind of the timeline of this. If they can get preliminary plans to us in a couple weeks, something to show the public, then we can move forward with this resolution and necessity. I have it slated to go at our next meeting, cause I have the notice already sent to the paper. I am sending notices to the residents, waiting to see what this meeting comes out, if you guys want to move forward. And basically, what that does is at our next meeting, um, it gives all the residents along there a chance to come in and say, yeah, I'm forward, or no, I'm not. And Mr. Hago will be part of that, of course, so, I mean, not like you have to make a decision to move forward with the project tonight, I mean, you could get the property owners weigh-in at the next meeting. But in order to move forward to get the property owners weigh-in, you have to move forward with the engineering plans.
Eight thousand four, eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
If we look at all the numbers for street projects, uh, we're still well under those projected numbers that we had. Probably golfed quite hard at initially. You know, Mickelson came in about five hundred, six hundred thousand under our engineer's estimate. Danimar came in, uh, three or four hundred thousand under our engineer's estimate. So we're still within budget, so to speak. And I don't know, the resolution and necessity seems to have more traction in the city's favor than it ever has. And I would hate to spend a nickel in court because we couldn't get emergency services to some residents because the street was.
Ninth Street is so bad, we can't get emergency services up there.
There was a point this spring.
There was a couple, now three weeks probably into the spring that, I mean, it was tough. I mean, you got right by the trailer courts there where.
If a garbage truck sinks away, I would assume a fire truck would.
Well, that might be the garbage truck that had a sink.
It made it to the trailer park before it got stopped. But it didn't, it, it really tore the road up. I think motion to approve the proposal for professional service as presented for Ninth Street improvements.
Second.
General fund, Teresa?
Yeah, but right now we don't have anything budget, so.
Okay, further discussion? Burnham?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nelson?
No.
All right.
The only other thing I really felt like I wanted to discuss was, uh, just a quick update on Mickelson Road. They are working on a box cover, um, still, I think all the inspection, or the, the actual box sections are installed now. I'm just working on rep and sections and so all the can that's left on those. And, um, we did get a request for an extension from Suco. You know, just primarily based on flooding. We've had the spring that's really held them up network. So we're working on, um, putting together a formal request that we'll probably present at the next meeting.
Don't we have a critical date with the developer?
July.
Yes.
Yes. And I, and I called Sam Assam to talk to him about that because he would be the one. And so we discussed that, you know, the contractor is probably going to want a month, month and a half extension and see if he had any problem with that. And he said he doesn't, he understands the weather problem. So he's okay with extending because literally, I mean, he could get to his development and do his work now. Um, so we've got, you know, enough done that he can continue on. And the only concern we had was extending his letter of credit, but we've talked to him, he's talked to his bank and they're going to extend that as well. So I think we're covered there.
I assume we have a formal agreement with Mr. Assam?
Yes, yes, we have an agreement to follow them.
Don't worry, any, any, you were here when we talked forage majeure and all that kind of blunt stuff. You probably know Sam well. Um, do you see any ramifications as far as that July nineteenth deadline and, and, and I mean, is there's?
Yeah. Now, if he extends the letter of credit, he's apparently informed Teresa that Selkup is doing the work for him and, and they've visited and he wants them. He knows, I mean, him after they're done with the city project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
That's all I really wanted to touch on. If anybody else has questions, I think.
So I said, Mark, what's the chance we're going to grass plant?
This spring, I'd, I'd say.
That's what I wondered.
I'd say chances are good. Um, Mitch met with contractor out there, uh, last week, I think.
Yeah, last week.
And just kind of walked the site, looked at, you know, how things paired over the winter. Um, they have a little bit of touch-up work to do and then they're going to seed whenever they can get a decent window in to seed. So it's, it looks like next week may, you know, might be too goddamn weak. So by the end of next week, things look dry, they can be out there, see.
What would they put in on our sidewalk up there is really, especially on my side, is really nice. Those guys planted last fall and that was, that was late.
Yeah.
They could have, we should have forced that out, should have forced that deal out here a little harder. Because they could have seeded that last fall and we would have had grass already. Just saying.
They drilled that or they did?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's really coming up nice. It's coming together. Got the deputy watching out for stuff. Keep them, uh, going and stopping. It's been going. All right, we're going to move on to Craig.
I'm not really going to touch on much mosquitoes. Um, there is a grant that's just showed up that's available, came out here a couple of days ago. So I'll be applying for that. Um, you think on Total Creek renaming, um, that is going to, there's a small meeting tomorrow at, um, one-thirty. Um, it's going to be telecast if anybody wants to listen to it on their Board of Commission website. That's basically just, uh, the preliminary one. They're just going to make sure we got everything that we need for them. Uh, go ahead and advertise it as, uh, argue it to the public and then it'll be like forty-five days. Then we'll have a meeting in Hartford where they'll have an actual board meeting to start moving the process forward. It's still a long ways out. That's all I got in my report except for some bid I, or some, uh, crack seal and stuff like that, prices.
Sports Complex, it's a backstop scheduled for the end of May.
Yeah. Um, so the last ice storm we had. After God, kind of nice. Um, we, I got out there, took some pictures, wearing it. And, um, met with the insurance guys and they are in the process of probably paying a portion of this year whole project, so.
Thank you, God.
So, um, Teresa's been working with them and I've been, I met with them and stuff like that, gave them pictures and all that. I explained to them what happened before and what it, what the nuisance damage was and they might pay a portion of it or put, put a portion of it.
It's not like they're going to cut us jack for it.
So along with that, um, and they couldn't get out there to do anything this last, since, I mean, it's still too wet. I don't even get equipment in there. But I did talk to the guy, um, last week finally got a commitment by him. Nate wanted to have until the twenty-second before we let him out there. Um, and then we have until Jan-Rede, so I got him a tight window and they said they'd have it done. So it'll be done before Jan-Rede.
Who is that Craig that does that?
Michael Spence is the one that got a little, little bit out of it.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting reimbursed from the insurance. Right now we got the.
Four-inch post.
Four-inch post. We're going to put in six inch, they'll cover to the four-inch. You know, it'll just pay the difference between that and the seven-inch sound.
Anything else before I go on to the other stuff here? So I got the prices on crack ceiling, um, from three different companies. Highway improvements, which, uh, has been doing ours for years, so it was a little bit at seventy-five cents a minute a foot. We usually just, uh, we have a certain amount of that we spend for crack ceiling. And we'll do the projects that we are planning on slurry sealing next year. Um, we'll do them this year. And then, um, typically if there's extra money available, we'll hit some of the worst spots of town are getting sealed up. So, and like I said, we've always stayed low on our budget. I just give them a footage and say, here's how much we can do and have a, so.
How many, how many feet did you quote for the, for the crack seal?
Um, it's usually a dollar, it's usually right around that twenty thousand feet. When I got.
I'm just, I'm just curious because it doesn't, it's hard to compare these quotes when it looks like they're bid in different ways because highway improvement said seventy-five cents a foot, but they didn't give any footage. And then sixty-two fifty for mastic.
Well, mastics is separate item on here. Um, I'll explain that too. So when I call up your prices on it, I, I always tell them, I want price per foot. And I give them a rough idea of what we're going to do. And I told them all between, I said, right around that fifteen thousand, uh, dollar range, what we're going to go, I know what the price comes in at. So they give me a price per foot. Both highway improvements and Seal Pros, I believe it was, they are meeting South Dakota DOT specs. Uh, this margin, they route just a little bit wider. Um, they usually go one inch by one inch. And then they meet the Minnesota specs where I know that their prices are going to double. And typically a three-quarters more than they're adequate for doing it. So that's what South Dakota DOT specs need, so. So the price is basically, uh, seventy-five cents a foot for highway improvements. Margin was at, um, about fifty per foot. And Seal Pros was at eighty-five cents per foot. And, uh, Seal Pros also has, um, fifty-five hundred fifty dollars for mobilization. And I think the price is in on that on margins, so. And highway improvements, their prices with mobilization, there's no mobilization fees.
Anybody got any crack ceiling experience?
Yeah, I do.
You have some concern. You, you've got some.
I experienced highway improvement taking a high-powered, uh, air compressor and blowing road debris all over my truck.
That's right.
And he, he goes, uh, he resolved the situation. I just wish these quotes were a little bit. So Seal Co Craig, three pounds of span per gallon and then two applications for twenty-two thousand dollars.
And that's that Seal Co. So right now I'm just looking at the crack ceiling itself. Each one is a separate bid. It just, highway improvements put them on three sheets, they didn't have one. And margin, um, they wouldn't even, um, give us a price on the, um, bike trail because it's already been sealed once. They said the product will not work at the.
Well, just, just for simplicity purposes, let's not even talk about margin tonight.
Okay.
So, because in, in my opinion, it's, it's either Seal Pros or it's, uh, I'm going to.
So just for, um, crack ceiling, both of them are doing the exact same type of work. It's, they're both meeting South Dakota DOT specs, a three-quarter by three-quarter.
Ten cents difference.
Ten cents, uh, a foot difference. And then also there's a mobilization fee of five hundred and fifty for Seal Pros.
Has there been any other complaints? Because you remember when I told you? It might, it might only fortunate one in the town, but that ever had, happened to that, do you?
That I'm aware of, yes.
That's why they call me luck. So this is going to be three motions?
I would, yeah, I mean, I, we can, I'd like to explain them all just a little bit.
Okay.
So I guess I'll look for motion for the crack ceiling first.
I like most two for the contract for asphalt crack ceiling at seventy-five percent, or seventy-five cents a linear foot crack. A linear foot crack?
Yeah.
Uh, for highway improvements for the maximum, what do we, what do we, uh?
Think, I'd have to look at my budget number, um.
So whatever was budgeted.
Second.
Thank you, sloppy. Careful pointing that up.
All right.
Crack ceiling, twenty thousand.
Five thousand twenty-five, okay.
All right, further discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll vote my hands.
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Burnham?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
So the next thing is that mastic, um, I wasn't planning on really doing any mastic repair or anything like that. The only time we've ever really done it was on Main Street, which is probably ten years ago. Um, it had a bunch of, uh, dips where all the, um, service lines were at, the water and sewer and that stuff. And before we slurry sealed it, I had that done on there to give her them that it really held in good. Since the spring, the way this Western Avenue's been taking a beating, the only way to really make sure we can try to save the road is to put some mastic down. I don't know, we kind of estimated about five, five thousand pounds on it. The, the real thin layers that we won't be able to put asphalt in there to get them to hold, they'll just, they'll just blow out. So we'll basically lose our slurry seal. So this is the only chance we have is doing some patchwork on the whole road, like more than wheel rutting and stuff like that. Just to get the road kind of stabilized more. So before we slurry seal it, otherwise I don't think we'll keep our slurry seal. And we still might lose some. I mean, I'm not going to, it's not guaranteed, but, so I'd like to. That's why we want to get priced on this to have this done prior to, uh, slurry seal. And I was going to, I'll make sure that whatever we do here, as long as we can get the roads done for next year, I'll cut back on some of my, um, crack ceiling, just so we stable budget as long as we get the roads that we need to get done for the following year and then any really bad spots, so.
So mastic is a wider.
Yeah, it's thinner. Um, it, uh, it's heated up and laid out, squeegeed out. It's, um, it can be laid in real thin coats, um, but it'll fill. I mean, you can use it for like a three-quarter.
Like wooden bottom and a dent.
Yep.
It's a big price disparity.
Yeah.
It's almost alarming.
And the product is, like I said, uh, both are with the DOT specs and highway improvements one, it actually showed me the mastics back on Main Street years ago. And it, like I said, it's been holding everywhere. And Brett, Brett's from Hartford here and that's why his prices are always really low. Keeping crack ceiling, it's ten cents more than any other town around here. So it just treats us, gives us good pricing, so.
Motion to approve highway improvement bid for mastic, asphalt mastic prepared, not to exceed six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Discussion?
Well, the big price difference, Craig, is it because he lives in town or is it because of the product quality?
Uh, it's all the same product. Uh, there is a Seal Pros, exact same product. It's just that he treats us well in town.
Western Avenue running the hook for the whole, for the southbound lanes?
The problem, man, going up, yeah, that is ours.
And, uh, no other streets in town need that mastic?
Not mastic. I mean, there will be when we get down that road next year, the year after and stuff like that. See what they look like this fall, this year, next year, so.
All right, other questions and discussion? All right, Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Um, bike path, uh, Seal Co. What they're looking at doing is, um, two coats. The first one is, uh, asphalt emulsion with, um, uh, sand in it. So you've got a little bit of grit, so it's not slippery. So the first one will be, they'll squeegee it out and then it'll actually fill in, uh, the cracks and the leos and kind of push, you know, level things off more. Then the second one, they'll, uh, blow it on basically and that'll give it, keep it that rough texture. But it's going to be a fine enough sand that it's not going to, you're not going to hardly notice it. But it's going to give you that enough where it's not slippery. So, um, I got prices from, and like, like I said, um, margin didn't even, they said they won't even, uh, give me a price on that because what they use will not work with, um, already being sealed, so. And those prices, um, is, um, twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty cents for Seal Pros in nineteen sixty-eighty-four for highway improvements. And I went out and measured everything to see. So the footages are, it's, it's bid by, it's priced per square yard. So the square yardage could be off a little bit. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, they're usually pretty accurate. They might be off three to four yards somewhere here and there, but, so I guess to bid it, I'd probably like to have more of a square yard price. But like I said, I measured all these and feel pretty comfortable with it over, so.
Which trailer are we doing all of them or which one are we doing?
We had a budget for doing everyone this year, just to get them all to.
Yeah, highway improvement. Seal Co bike trails for a dollar a square yard.
Second. Discussion?
Um, there's some like holes in, yeah, you're going to fix all of them. We'll fix them, or? Um there's some like holes in, yeah, you're gonna fix all of them, we'll fix them or?
Yeah, um when I saw it in Brett, he said he would probably go in and put that mastic in or just do it for free, just uh give them seal up, so everything's taken care of and done right, so.
Not many, but there's a, there's a few spots that took it yet this way.
Yeah, he walked them through the other day, I was just kinda looking over that and that's when he came back and gave, I mean, back in April, he gave me a price on it and I'm sure they're, told them all those cracks, so, so that'll be taken care of, Brian.
Question? All right, my hand?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Vernon?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And that's all I have at this time.
Get Karen's report, find that option before.
I have nothing, no action items, so unless you have questions for me.
True son.
Um one thing I just want to touch base, give you an update on our summer hire. Um I think we have all our positions covered except for lifeguards, I mean, we have, technically we have, we have our manager, assistant manager, and then we've got three that could float between lifeguard, assistant manager, and then three actual just lifeguards. So in essence, we've got six lifeguards, we usually have eight to nine, I just got an application today, so hopefully we'll hire that one. Talked with Amy, she's talked with all the guards, I think we'll have enough to cover all the shifts in the days, that's what was kinda my concern, cause the guards we do have have a lot of activities. So we're gonna start off with full hours and everything and um we'll see how it goes, it may need adjusting as we go along if we're getting guards that don't show up or a bunch of guards that need the same times off, we'll kinda look at that as we go, we know we got May covered, cause she's got the schedule already figured out and okayed with them and we'll just kinda go from there, so. Um I did contact MB in Sioux Falls and Wild Water West and said, your guards looking for extra hours, have them come here, we'll, we'll definitely use them, so. Well, otherwise, I think everything else, we, we are ready to go and we, we've got enough applicants and um public works kind of a little short this year too, I mean, we got enough people there, but we're limited on the age of what some people can do, but I, I think we'll be okay, we got them hired anyway. And then just quick P and Z update, they, uh at the last meeting, went through the international building codes, we're on the two thousand fifteen now, we're updating to the eighteen, Sioux Falls just did that, the county just did that, Brandon's doing it. So that's gonna come to you guys um next week for review and Paul Clark will be here to kinda hit the highlights with you as far as any significant changes on those. Um one thing that's not on our report that I do wanna bring up, we had our owners here today, they're supposed to be here today and tomorrow, um they got everything done they needed today, so they're not coming back tomorrow. Um so, well, when they were here, um our capitalization policy, which basically is um items that we put on our fixed asset inventory and we depreciate out, right now we have um the dollar amount set at that capitalization for five hundred dollars, that means anything, five hundred dollars or over is what goes on there. Well, that's a lot of things to put on inventory and depreciate and she says, most cities don't go that low, we need to think about upping that. And I asked her what most cities use for a dollar figure and she said, it's usually five thousand, so five thousand is all you depreciate, put on that fixed asset, so. Uh it's okay with you guys, I'm gonna put together a policy for next week to maybe change that going forward since she says we have a ridiculous amount of items on our fixed asset inventory, so, uh okay, I'll put together a policy and we'll look at it next week.
Two, twenty years ago, if we had had five thousand, we would've only had one item on there.
Yeah, so it's mainly, you know, for bigger equipment items and your, your expensive items to depreciate down, but we got a little step on it, so. Okay, and that's all I have unless you have questions.
All right, we'll move to office of office for all our positions here. So, I think we can do this, do, do you want pictures of this or anything like that for the website or anything?
Yeah, we usually shoot pictures.
It's up to you, I don't, I don't, it's up. If you want them, great, otherwise I was thinking I'd go to the podium and we do office of office here, otherwise we can do it from the flag.
Yeah.
Would you have your stop photos?
Huh?
Stop photos?
Yeah, we, we, it's the same people, we know it's on the council.
Okay, so this is what we'll do, we'll do it a little bit different then, I handed that, load that. George Travis. Arden. Is it on our list area? Maybe what we'll do is just run right down line and stand up.
You're the boss.
Yeah, let's do it. We'll do them the right way.
We'll do them the right way.
There you go. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm Mark Monahan, have, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward Two within and for the city of Hartford in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota and the ordinances of Hartford and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office, councilperson Ward Two.
Do you wanna do this?
Iron Jones, yeah, well, Iron Jones, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward Three within the city of Hartford in the county of Minnehaha, state of South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota and the ordinances of Hartford and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson Ward Three.
I'm Travis Keel, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward One within and for the city of Hartford in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota and the ordinance of said city of Hartford and that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my kno- to the best of my knowledge and ability perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson Ward One.
Hi, Jessica Johnson, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward Two within and for the city of Hartford in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota and the ordinance as of said city of Hartford. And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all of the duties of my said office of councilperson Ward Two.
I'll do mine, I'm council president, maybe I'll have you swear me in here, right? All right, I, Jeremy Money, having been elected to the office of mayor within and for the city, town of Hartford and in the county and state, do solemnly swear that I support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota and the ordinances of city and town of Hartford and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of mayor. Now, do I gotta make sure we sign these?
Yep.
And give them to Karen. Can you? All right, next we'll do is, this is normally where we break and, and adjourn and come back in as a new council, but because all the seats are the same, we don't have to do that, so we can stay in the same meeting hall and continue on. But we do take nominations and start the election of council president and council vice president in separate items. Um so we'll basically open up nominations for election of council president.
Told you I was gonna give you three seconds, Mark, nominate Mark Monahan as council president.
Got a nomination for Mark as council president?
Does anybody else want it?
That's what he said this morning.
Does anybody else, I'm honest with you.
Move to nominate our new ones for council president. Did we do, okay, I, I missed it, we got a motion on the first one, we, our nominations, do we don't need, do we need a second? Sorry.
Right, they just are nominations, now maybe we take a vote on who.
Right. I think that's fine, but then once I heard your second, then I thought, oh, we've got Scott stood on second. We're good, okay. All right, we have two. Do we have any others?
Remove the cease nominations.
On this, we will need a second.
Right.
Second.
Got a motion to cease nominations? All right, I think we have two. We can vote as a council. Steer me in the wrong, in the right direction if I'm going in the wrong direction, Mr. Nelson. But um I believe the way this is spelled out is council, we can um, we can vote verbally, basically on first candidate and second candidate. I don't vote unless there's a "aye" and majority dictates. Anything else that you're thinking about there?
And do we vote or? Oh wait, I'm just curious.
Like Jeremy said, you're gonna vote on.
Survivor.
I think what he's asking is do they abstain for their own position?
Do we abstain for our own or?
Oh, you don't have to, there's nothing that you have to abstain, right?
I'm just curious.
You can if you want to do it.
Yeah, you can if you want to, but you don't have to.
Okay. Just curious.
Okay. Okay, so what we'll do is, and help me keep track of this as we're going, but um how we'll do that is, we'll start with Mark, he was the first nomination and we'll, we'll go down the table and we'll have who's or nays, we can vote for one, but you can vote for both, right? So, all right, we'll start with Mark, we'll start down at the end with Scott.
Yay.
Johnson?
Nay.
Keel?
Uh, nay.
Vernon?
Nay.
And Jones?
Well, I'm gonna say nay. Or maybe I should say, no, I'll say nay.
I'm making it so hard. All right, Emma.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All right. Next standing up is Arden. Going the same order, Nelson?
Is?
Arden? Arden Jones, sorry.
My name?
Name?
Name.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Vernon?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yeah.
And my hand?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Congratulations to Jones, council president. Next we will open up um election of vice president.
Motion to nominate Travis Keel for vice president. See, I come this way.
Need to add, over thousand nominations. I'll suck at that.
Oh, there we go.
I don't even know if you get a chance to accept, so I think it's just.
I don't really. Make up for that with my name, my name's true.
I know where you're coming from.
All right.
We did to a cease nomination, but.
Yep, do you need anything to front? Oh, do you?
Well, Mark, your motion to cease nominations, is it cease nomination and cast unanimous ballot for Travis? We can do it all in one motion.
Sure, that's, that's what I said.
I'll still say it.
Okay, that was great.
All right, next item on the agenda is the appointments for the official newspaper, healthcare facility, and official depositories. So, I believe I can do this all in one fell swoop, so we're gonna go through that, official newspaper. We didn't have to.
Still have to approve that motion, but.
Or did you vote on it?
We had a motion and a second, but no vote.
Yeah, we probably voted on it.
Better run it.
Yeah, we did.
I'm motioning a second for nomination cease and cast unanimous ballot, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, appointments, official newspaper, messenger, healthcare provider, Sanford Clinic, Hartford, official depositories, Great Western Bank, Relia Bank, US Bank, and First National Bank in Sioux Falls. With those appointments, we'll just need a motion to approve the appointments on second.
Remove approved appointments as it's called on by mayor.
Second.
Either one. All right. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, patiently waiting, now we got to this part of the agenda, Jamboree event to update and for requests for release of the twenty-one team funds.
Hey guys, you'll see me at next meeting too, cause I'll have a special event for, for that, only the events that I'll submit here, so not gonna give you a whole lot of updates, cause I'll have all of the information, including our final schedule, which we're currently in the process of being ninety-eight percent finalized. Um couple additions though, that you'll notice on there, we're doing compliments to me, a big ball turn on Sunday. The colored ones, pretty much all ages.
Pretty much, we said eight plus.
Yeah, but pretty much.
Yeah.
Um so that's me this year, also Buffalo Ridge Brewery has decided to step in as well, they wanna do a few things, they're doing a family trivia night down there and then also they're gonna be doing that on Thursday and then Saturday, they're gonna do um a Jamboree craft beer fest. So, a little bit different, so bring in some different types of beers down in town. Um so that's in place, um I ninety's coming back, so with their opening, they're also gonna do the Hartford Home Lays that they'd had in the past, so that's gonna be in there as well. Like I said, next meeting, you'll actually see everything, but the rest of it's kind of the same as it's been over the years, so it's going really well, we've got a very strong group this year and we meet the Flirters Mondays on every month, so we welcome anybody to come and give feedback, but I was told that I did personally invite everybody in town, so. I personally invite anybody in Hartford to join us if they really wanna come and share the fun of the weekend, but um other than that, the only other thing we have since last, the bills start to roll in now, that we're getting within a month, um some money, so the request to release the twenty-one team funds. That's it, so I'm back.
I move to release the Jamboree funds as budgets of four twenty-one.
Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Thanks guys.
Just thought I'd throw that out. All right, it's my birthday weekend.
Well, come tell the rec. We have a party just for you.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Speed limits and stop signs.
Well, definitely not in a self-sat now, and we know there's some stop signs and uh mostly just, we're supposed to go over all for a few days, weeks, whatever, and we kinda compared some notes that we put together signs that we thought should be considered, um like I said, tonight, it's just for you guys to consider and um we put, none of them have to change, we need to really the same, or we can add or whatever we need to do, we just, we picked out some areas that we thought were more, um some safety issues and some uh um areas of concerns of speed and stuff like that. So I'll just kinda go through them and explain them all and write, send me whatever you want, two of them is here. Um we've got the old map there, I think you guys each have maps up there kind of labeled out.
Before, yeah, before we start, this is something that we have to take action on or it's just a feedback and then they do what they want or the.
Some of these I'd like you guys to really consider probably action on, because it's gonna be removing the stop signs and things like that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So.
But for now, consider it and then we'll talk about it again in another meeting, so you have a chance to look at the areas and drive by them and stuff and consider it.
In new developments, we pretty much just, we lay out the signs and we think they need to be and we just put them in, I mean, it's what uh MEG CD and, and you know, and what engineers make and that stuff, we sit down and kinda put the signs together, do that. This is, since these are already in place and I'd like to. This is, since these are already in place, and I'd like to have some action on them, not tonight, but, you know, I want you guys to drive, you think, you know, see what you're thinking of that stuff. The first one is, I'm gonna kinda point at the map here. So, from, right by the sewer plant there, the speed limit jumps up. Take these off. Um, start right here by the sewer plant, it goes up to thirty miles an hour. When this was put up thirty miles an hours back, when this road first got built, the road used to be just a little gravel road, dirt road, they'd go down the sewer plant and that's all it was. There's nothing out here except an old, uh, dump site and, uh, that was it. Um, once we got that dump site cleaned up and that, uh, we had a bunch of extra dirt on Mickelson, we thought, where are we gonna put this dirt? So we, we decided to go ahead, Mark was probably wrong at that time, but we decided, let's go ahead and get this road laid out. So we took all that dirt off there and we hauled it up in here, we made a real nice solid truck route. Previous to that, the trucks were going down Second Street, turning down First Street by the schools, everything like that, to get to the grade, to get to the elevator. So when we went to thirty on this here, there's no bike trails, no nothing out here. It was basically a gravel road, you know, nothing around it. Since then, we've got soccer fields, we've got bike trails, you know, we're getting a little more development, more kids out in that area going across there. And, you know, thirty might not, it doesn't seem fast the road, but it is for a safety condition with what we have out there now. So that's one thing we'd like to do is look at dropping this to a twenty all the way through that whole area. Um, number two is one that Deputy Ryan Moore talked to me about, we kinda kicked around. So currently, he got the two school zones in there, um, normal hours that, and there's a lot of children on there. It's fifteen for dead, for being near all of the road there. Anyway, there's a short chunk in here that's twenty miles an hour. Um, that, uh, and then once you hit the business district, then it turns back into fifteen again. So Deputy Ryan was thinking that'd be, it almost makes sense with the parks, the parks all fifteen miles an hour by that, that we should almost make this here fifteen from this area all the way down to the half block. Uh, which would be the alley right out here on the west side of, uh, Main Street. So that's another consideration. Like I said, do you have anything you wanna add about that one?
I don't, just, it just makes it less confusing. It's even good for me, I don't wanna speed either. Um, to make it fifteen all the time, do that more out. It's not just a safety issue, it's also a consistency issue.
Is there any point, is there any advantage to, to, to the two blocks that isn't?
All the way to Western?
Yeah.
That's one thing I kinda thought of even today, and I was just thinking about that too, so that's also something we can even, you know, consider. We just wanted, since we're getting right next, it went that twenty a little bit there by half block here. Without, you know, just run it all the way up to the fifteen, I don't wanna stop, but, you know, fifteen the rest of the way isn't gonna, wouldn't really affect it, I don't think, I think it'd be, that way you know that whole road's fifteen, you know, so.
Um, I have noticed that on Second Street between, well, it's either between Main and Western or Oaks and Western, there isn't a, like a, speed limit sign on the north side of the road, only on the south side.
Yeah, so, the way the ordinance is in Hartford, every road in town is basically twenty miles an hour, unless it's art, you know, noted, whatever. So it's kinda one of those things that we don't put signs for people heading out as much as, you know, coming into town. So, since everything around, it's all twenty, people need to understand that it's twenty, not, you know, so when it drops down to fifteen, we'll let them know, yeah, you're at fifteen now, so we drop it down. And then once they're at fifteen, we don't say like, end of fifteen, we just have it in that downtown area. Um, you know, there's, you gotta figure out how much signage you really wanna put out there. Um, so you try to do the least amount you have to, um, to make everybody understand what the, you know, laws are. And we do have some areas like that that don't have anything off of Mickelson, so we're trying to come up with a sign actually going on the highways, and we gotta talk DOT and that, it's gonna say, uh, Ryan, put something together, something like, um. Uh, speed, I don't know if you know, but basically, speed limit, um, per city ordinance, twenty miles an hour unless posted otherwise, or something like that, because. Ryan went through it the other day, Deputy Ryan did, and was just counting up signs and the amount of signs that we'd have to do just to mark every road that's not typically marked right now, would cost about anywhere five, very around five thousand dollars, and just, and basically materials. Um, 'cause signs right now are, they're about two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a sign, to put them up as tell spar, so it gets expensive. So, but that's, you know, like I said, all this stuff is open discussion, if, you know, if you guys feel there's a need to have another sign somewhere, we can certainly talk about it and put it up if needed, you know.
So, so Jessica, you discovered, is a lot of what I discovered, you find a speed limit sign in one direction, but not the other, but.
Yeah.
Um, we can't expect, uh, the, the public to know what the city ordinance says, so that's why it has to be posted. And so, uh, what I suggested was we come up with a, a sign, um, a city of Hartford, speed limits twenty miles an hour unless otherwise posted in every road that comes into the city. So that we wouldn't have to put up a sign in every single one, except for the ones where we wanna slow folks down at the fifteen, or increase like Mickelson was thirty.
And then the other, and then the other twenty mile, they're just reminders, you know, right? Just so people kinda get it, you know, it's right, it's twenty and twelve, you know, so.
So like, let's say hypothetically, we put up these heads up, Hartford's twenty miles an hour as you come in. Would those be like a bigger sign, you know, to kinda draw attention, or how?
A lot of that's gonna depend on, if, and we don't, I haven't had a chance to, I called Travis with DOT, uh, a couple weeks ago and he hasn't got back yet, but that's something, we have to run that by them to see if they'll even allow us to put signs in the right ways. Uh, the county's been pretty good and state's been good about it. Um, they all have their own stipulation to what size, and a sign like that, um, there's probably something in the M U T C D that says, if you're gonna have a sign up, it's gonna be minimum of this size. So, it, it would be, especially like when you're coming in at, you know, if you're on forty-five, the sign could be a little bit smaller than it is at sixty-five, just so you can read it, you know, as you're coming through it, so. And you gotta keep the words down as, as, you know, small, I mean, as, least more words as possible, so that people can, you know, read it, comprehend the signs as they're driving by it.
Are there other small towns that have that? I don't know that I was.
I asked Tammy Washburn with Lyle's signs and she goes, that's, um, something, well, to try to figure out, 'cause she goes, I don't think we've ever done another town, so. So that's, you know, like I said, I'm sure there's towns out there that don't, it's just matter of finding, you know, and getting the wordage right, you know, we wanna make sure whatever we do is, you know, proper wordage, you know. But that's something we, we're gonna look into, you know, we haven't even come up with the answers on that yet, so. Um, so moving along, the third one there, which is gonna be right down here by, basically by our city shop, it, it comes out all the Main Street, we've never had a sign up there. And we have always kinda been leery about putting one up there, 'cause we thought, aim to last, somebody's gonna hit it, you know, trucks coming on here, like that, us guys blowing, so. We've had a street sign out for two years, hasn't been hit yet, so I feel pretty comfortable putting this up. But it really needs to stop, 'cause of elevator traffic, everybody's coming all the way down to Main Street and they're not stopped, you know, everybody's slowed down for, everybody that's used to driving it knows, you know, it's kind of a blind intersection there, you slow down and make sure it's coming, but they, they coast on through it, you know? So we should just stop that traffic and that definitely one that we should do.
Craig?
Okay.
U-turns there all the time, is that permitted or not?
U-turns are permitted unless they are posted, is that correct? Unless it's posted not permitted, in, in, any intersection?
Is, is this the corner of daycare?
I don't know.
Corner of South Bar.
I, I always thought that intersection, or, uh.
It's a very common.
U-turn, and like I said, what we're looking at, but I always thought those U-turns were permitted unless otherwise posted.
As long as you use right blinker, left, left blinker, right, right blinker, and left.
But I'm not, I'm not sure. I always thought that unless it's posted, it's, you know.
For addressing that intersection, I know it's very common.
Yeah.
So, I just, I've never.
And we could, you know, and it might be, you know, something that we couldn't, everybody's always done it, I guess unless there's something that says you can't do it unless it's posted, then we could put a sign saying U-turn permitted, you know, at this intersection, she is a wide degree, there's, that's a perfect spot to turn.
Every main street has a U-turn.
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
That's something, that's something we definitely look into, see, but I always thought that it was, you could, anything unless it was posted otherwise, so.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Um, so that's the third one, I'll try to get through this here quicker here, um. Uh, remove the stop sign at Mickelson Road Fighter, that's something we discussed when Mickelson Road gets finished up. Um, it should be arterial street, it should be open, it shouldn't be, you shouldn't stop the traffic on it, you know? If there's issues on the road for speeding, that's what their jobs are for, is to keep it under control out there, so that's something, we kinda talked about that, and at that time, we talked about putting up the signs, the radar signs to say, you know, speed, what your speed is and stuff like that. There's a lot of options out there for them, so.
The other thing on that, Craig, and Deputy Ryan, I would say, the other thing we're gonna have to watch then, is people coming off of Patrick, Easter, Fighter, man, I see a lot of people rolling through this.
Yeah.
So, if there's no stop sign, we know that they're not even gonna be slowing down at all, I'm thinking maybe more like Easter, you know, they're a block away. So if somebody's at Fighter, we need to make, you know, they're gonna have to make, make sure they stop, 'cause somebody's gonna pull out and somebody's gonna get hit, and they're kinda down Mickelson. Yeah, that would be my only concern with that, with that deal.
And anytime you take on a sign, like a stop sign, you're gonna have to put up some signage, you're gonna need another stop sign temporary, just, you know, just say cross traffic does not stop.
Right, or something like that.
You know, anything you put up, you'll fly, just to help catch the attention of people, get them used to it, and after a year or whatever, six months, you, you can take the flag down and people, they're getting the signs there, and so. That's something, like I said, all this is gonna be open for discussion or like that.
Right.
Um, next one is stop signs at Oaks, uh, offsetting intersection, they don't make sense, they're actually a traffic hazard, because you're stopping. You got, you got an intersection, three-way intersection there, and you're stopping two lanes in which you're letting the other one travel on through. When these are put in, was when we were doing, uh, Main, Oak Street was already done, we were doing Main Street project, and people on Oaks were worried about the traffic coming up their road, because it's the only through road, otherwise besides, unless it went over the Munt, that went all the way up to the post office. Um, so they're worried about the traffic coming down there. So, at that time, we put the stop signs up in there to control speed temporarily until the project on Main Street was done. Main Street project got done, people had a fit, they were gonna take the slowdown signs out, so that's why they got left. They shouldn't, they should not be in there, they should be here going. Um, we've got the same thing on, on Munt Avenue. Um, it's a three-way intersection, you're stopping two lanes, they're off, you know, the intersections are off, six, six streets doesn't go through, it doesn't butt at an intersection, they're offset a half block or two hundred feet. It's another traffic that we need to consider, eliminate the ones, like I said, you eliminate the ones on the, you know, the north and south ones, which are through traffic, leave the other signs there to stop traffic coming out of the main roads. Um, Vandemark is gonna be the next one, this is a little different situation, you do have the pool in the park right there, recommend, what we do there is we take out the one by Mark's place. Move it down to David Row and put an all-way stop, which would be a three-way stop down there, that, that'd be right before the pool. And that way you would have the control of slowing the people down to a stop and then go and get a fifteen miles an hour through the park area. So that one should be moved down to that area.
So where would you, where would you put that one, Craig?
It would be on, maybe lower than fifteen mile an hour speed limit is, right there down by David Row. I think it's just, so David Row would have a three-way stop, an all-way stop there. There's a speed limit sign there, that's where that stop sign would go. We'd have to relocate the speed limit sign, whether we moved it at three hundred feet or whatever, up to your place, do that stop sign post there?
I'm trying, I'm trying to think, where the, is it, um, is it where that big green electrical box is?
I'm trying to think, your next neighbor, um, to, to the south there, over the property lines, but, is where that's at.
That's where that big electrical box is.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
So it would be a three-way stop, you said?
And be an all, yeah, three, all-way stops, what they say now, so.
Leave the north on, leave the north on stop sign, and put another one between Devon, uh.
Be in the front yard of David Row and Mel's house.
Yeah, that, I, yeah, yeah, I think that's right. So you basically, you'd, you'd still have your control of the intersection with your stop sign, it's just you're moving it down to an actual intersection instead of stopping traffic at, uh, offset the intersection.
Is, is there a stop sign on Fifth then?
Yeah, that one there would get left, the one on, coming, you know, like, so when you come up down Fifth and you're gonna turn onto Vandemark, you'd still have the stop sign. Vandemark would be open traffic for another half a block, and then a stop at that intersection.
You don't think you'd run into it, because when they, when they run my stop sign, they're probably going thirty-five. Really? Well, they're, they're gonna be carrying that speed, they're gonna be carrying that speed down the pool now.
That's where we have patrol for a while and we'll get, I mean, and these are all these suggestions, you know, to.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, I just, in, in theory, in theory, it should work, but I know, just from living there for twenty-seven years, I know they're gonna be carrying thirty, thirty-five miles an hour down to that stop sign right next to the pool. So.
So, yeah, and that's, like I said, it's something that, you know, you try to control.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when you hit the stop sign, when you're speeding back up to, above the fifteen again, anyway, then that, half block, so.
And if, and if you have an area like that, that you said you, you said you would do how long?
Sixty-five.
Um, thirty-five, that's, that's good.
I can, I can shoot videos of people blowing through the stop sign at forty.
And I, I don't know if it's so much.
They're doing eighty by the time they're high side.
And some, some of the stop signs, probably a lot of stop potential going, it's just the goofy spots, people are thinking about stopping for, they don't even look, just go and say, ooh, stop sign, you know?
Well now, I'm gonna disagree with you on that point, Craig, because when I'm standing in the yard, through the driveway, and they come very, down there, and they look over, and they see me standing in the yard, that's when they jam on brakes. And they stop about three quarters of the way through the intersection, and it's like, yeah, good enough. Yeah, I can see me, but I stopped. I cleared the intersection, but I stopped. Oh, you can make a lot of money up there.
Yeah, I would say for those, you know, for where Mark is at, and I'm, I'm the one that's sixth and Munt.
Yeah.
So Sixth Street, like, you know, go into my driveway, I think you just have to have more patrol there for a while until people get accustomed to it, 'cause people, yeah, they come down that road really fast.
You know, and like on Sixth Street there, Munt, if we wanted to leave a stop sign on that road, what you'd wanna do is move them, so you'd have an all-way stop at a three-way intersection, instead of having a two-way stop at a three-way intersection in two different spots.
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like going the east and west is good, but, you know, I don't know, I feel like Munt, it doesn't make sense to have that in those.
And a lot of the stop signs weren't put in years ago, Mark can confess, or admit to it, that I fought stop signs from day one, because they weren't, they're designed, at that time, they were put in for speed control, not stopping. And the more you put up and you are relying on speed control with them, and you're letting the people run through intersections, they're gonna keep doing it everywhere, not just in Hartford, do you say to them, you call?
I, I suspect that, I don't know for sure, Craig could probably give you a better idea, but I, I have a guess that a lot of these stop signs that Craig has singled out are stop signs in town, because somebody came in and said they wanted a stop sign.
Yeah.
So, it's real easy to make a neighbor happy by putting a pole and put a stop sign.
So we actually had a person that's complained.
And a lot of Hoops is like that.
About a, about a yield sign, and they don't know it, but when the road gets done, they're actually gonna have a stop sign on their side of traffic, so they're not gonna be happy. Like I said, signage goes up for a reason, and that's what we're trying to do, is get everything pretty much uniform. Uh, the next one, number eight, that's actually down here, um, at Fighter, First and Fighter, which is right by the corner of the school, all, it's all crosswalks in there. And I don't know many who've heard it down First Street, I stopped that intersection more than once, because it just feels like you should stop there. Um, and that actually should be a four-way stop right there, an all-way stop is what it should be. So, and that's more for safety, just to the kids and that stuff in that area, so, and the school, the school area. Um, that is all we had at this time, I guess, besides some other things that we are looking into and working on, and like I said, that's something that's, uh, stuff on the DOT and, and the county highways, that I'm just trying to get, see if we can come up the right verbiage and that. Um, along with that, I know Teresa and Ryan, or Deputy Ryan, are, um, looking at some more of this stuff too, because right now, all this money is going somewhere else, and we're thinking it'd be nice to get it to come to Hartford, so.
The tickets roll right now, they're, they're rolled off the state ordinance, and so the state gets the money. Um, but I was told that Brandon has done an ordinance where it can come to the city, so, I'm trying to talk with Brian Reed to get their example of their ordinance, so any tickets they write come into the city, versus the state, 'cause we gotta put a fully signed each time. We'll probably come to you.
Something's not on your, Craig, with Vandemark going on, what's the plan for signs there, you know?
I was just looking that up, and there's a stop sign going back in on Park T.
Um, Vandemark will actually up at Park T, we'll put it up before we stop it, or, we'll, are we doing it there? That's something, talk about you, so.
What about Nai?
Uh, Nai, I, I believe there should be a. Uh, Ninth, I, I believe there should be a four-way stop in there unless we, you know, that's just, it's been there forever, um, it's, it's an intersection, it's actually basically. But I mean, that's something, if we did decide to take two signs out, we'd take the ones out on Vandemark, make the Ninth, Ninth Street stop.
Anybody need to revisit this in a month?
I, I'd like to go and look at it.
Yeah, cool, that's what, yeah, and that's what is taking me by the, I mean, I hate to.
I think we just can't wait till the next year.
Yeah, and even when, yeah, once you guys make the decisions, I'm, I'm gonna have to inventory signs, because I can't, we can't just start pulling stop signs unless they got their proper signage put and recalled, so. It's gonna involve the order signs and stuff like that, if it's not, so. But I just, like, so importantly, we just wanted, we won't roll around on different occasions and just daily routine and that stuff, and we just sort of jumped, and then we decided, oh, last week it was, and we put this stuff together, and so these are ones that we really think are, need to be addressed at this time, and I'm sure there is stuff that we missed that should be addressed maybe too.
If we pull those on Fighter, before Nicholson's done all the way, it'll be interesting to see how that traffic falls, before that's done all the way down to Part A.
Right.
Because that's been the concern of the people that live east of me, is that when it gets done, it's really gonna be fast coming by their house.
But the ones, uh, east of you, will be going the other direction?
Yeah, I just wonder, like, where is it?
Probably, yes.
Where, where is the concern though? I mean, where's the traffic coming from?
They're more concerned with the school bus in the morning, stops right there at the corner of, what's the one right, I mean, Shamra?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shamra, that was their concern. They were here way early on, and we started talking stop signs, gee whiz, that was last Cloverleaf. Cloverleaf, or, yeah, they were here talking about that, but at the time, Deputy Alberts suggested no stop signs there, and that's when we made the decision to, up the.
You know, when you look at Sioux Falls, a lot of the roads are turning, the school bus stop there all the time.
Right, yeah.
A lot more traffic.
I would say I haven't heard anything from my neighbor, from any of the people that were here that night, not a word. So, they must be relatively satisfied with how it's going so far, so.
Yeah, please drive, look over, like they say, like, yeah, one of First Street, if it feels like there should be something there, comfortable, you know, comfortable speed on the same way, if it feels comfortable of speed, look down, just down, and it's like, yep, I got that sort, you know? And you'll find yourself, mostly the twenties are pretty comfortable, especially when you've got cars parked here and there, and you've got shift over late a little bit, uh, driving by.
Thank you for all this.
So, yeah, so, like I said, let us know on it, we'll address them when you guys feel comfortable addressing.
That's a, next meeting, if I would like to fill in.
Alright, so we've got, we do the billboard lease agreement to the west face of billboard number one, remember that's Ralph Tushin?
Yep, so Ralph Tushin has a interest in renting this billboard, and so it'd be, um, as you're going to Sioux Falls, it's, that's the one facing you blank. He wants to use it to advertise his taxidermy, and then he has some storage out of his property at the next interstate exchange, so. Um, the lease agreement is, um, our standard lease agreement that Larry has drafted, um, says you can't sublease in it. Um, it does have the, how we updated with, you have to put a deposit now, so it has all that language in there. And then if you remember, a year ago, we changed the price on all those going eastbound to a hundred and fifty a month, so.
So he's gonna create a vinyl, a forty-eight by twelve, or forty-eight by twelve, that, that's, is basically a split division, uh, split down the middle as far as.
I haven't seen it yet, he has to give me a copy of it before it puts up, but yeah, it's gonna, sound like it's gonna advertise both for him, so, yeah.
Motion to approve billboard lease agreement for West Face billboard number one to Ralph Tushin, and businesses that he wants to place on there, contingent on the fact that he supplies you with a slick of the billboard.
Yeah, they all have to do that.
I know, I know, just going in there, just to make sure.
I can tell.
One second, right, discussion?
Uh, one other discussion is, that's the billboard, that for every reason is oversized.
Yep.
Yeah, and I.
That one is, they're in forty-eight by.
It's like a foot and a half, it's like sixteen inches bigger.
Two by twelve are self-attached to the bottom.
There, the, the lights were blinded to people on the interstate, so the DOT asked, wanted us to extend that down to block the light, so, because people get, catching it as they're coming over the hill.
So Craig did, since you alerted us, Craig did give me the part dimensions on that, and Ralph does know about it, so he orders the correct vinyl size.
That would torque him off something too.
Yeah, so, so I got a hold of them, and so he does know the correct vinyl size.
Do you have a general question? Do we have to have something on it by a certain time?
So, the two blank ones we have out there, um, Tony Axel Blue Forty-two, that's like, you know, he pays us every month, so we have him rented out. But yes, DOT, basically, we, I've got a letter, basically requires, like, they shouldn't be blank longer than a year, which this has been. I actually, after I got this lease, contacted Tony again, and we've been contacting periodically, when you get your vinyl up, when you get your vinyl up, we're, we no response.
But we don't have that in our lease.
We don't have that verbiage in our lease, but they have to have something in here. Yeah, because.
If, because the DOT gets on us, right?
Sure, yep.
Okay, so then if the DOT gets after us, now we got a whole other fight to go after, and they can sit blank, so Mr. Tushin could do the same thing. I mean, heck, if I'm the coffee cup, I could rent all of them, so that get-go can't put their name on it, and just leave them blank, right? I mean.
That's a good point.
That is a good point, yes.
The JR problem, I guess, but, it just takes the liability off us and puts it on them, so the DOT can be mad at them, and we gotta agree.
I don't know if it's a statute or a rule, um, I got a letter from them, they may note it.
Alright, we got a motion and a second for this lease agreement, any other discussion of this?
Um. Not say everything, but, uh, Mark.
Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and more discussion on Mark Twenty?
So on your point, if I read this lease correctly, we can terminate their lease. In the event that, so, upon termination of this agreement, kind of show them who within three days. So is that, is that, is that an option for us? We could, you know, rather than rewrite the lease, we just enforce, enforce the lease as it is? Or you could, I mean, that's our key, our, our.
Yeah, but.
Say.
But you can just have it spelled out.
Just have it spelled out, then they can't even argue. It's kinda like when we decided that if you had a parking ticket, you can't come argue to us, it's just done, you know, hands off, so. If you don't put it up within three months, lease becomes an old boy, yeah?
I, I agree with Mark, I'm, I'm with you, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
This drives me nuts looking at that.
I'm not saying we gotta go back and try redoing previous agreements, but then going forward, we can prevent some issues.
Does Tony ever say why he has not had the vinyl up there?
Um, he, first time, the guy that he had lined up to do it, um, couldn't, couldn't get him to do it to go up there, so then he had to find another company. Um, well, actually, I think the first thing is that we was waiting for a signage grant from the HADF, and then the company he had that was gonna do it, ended up, he couldn't get him to do it, so he had to find another company, and it's just been kind of excuse after excuse, and. I contacted him about this DOT situation, and I haven't even got a response from him on that.
The DOT thing?
I suppose he was something.
But the DOT, they like calls us on two, three, two.
But I have not got another letter from the DOT yet, so.
Could have, that is plastic, that's plastic.
Alright, anything else on billboard?
If we do that fundraiser that Chase.
Alright, we're gonna move on to two thousand eighteen.
I didn't know that.
Basically, just need a motion to approve it, um, it was put together by our auditors, um, this is done, these are our two thousand eighteen, just basically our financials. They are just in today, right now, they're working on our actual audit, you know, reviewing our books, but.
Motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, any more questions?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright, under court comments, we have the thank you from Ralph Central Business Class. And, uh, I'm sure that's, that happened with that, I think Jesse put that on, if I remember. And then we have the thank you from Secretary Ward for drinking water excellence. That's good.
That's awesome.
That's worth.
If I, if, is anyone, I read the, uh, the PS from the high school, and I'm just curious if I missed something or not, because the thing they, one of the things they learned was the proposed budget for the new sports complex was ten million, and I don't recall that. And then, but then reduced to six million over three years, and I'm kinda curious where they got that.
I think the original build-out, when it was, we had all the land, I know.
Turnkey, it was ten million bucks.
Turnkey was ten million bucks?
That wasn't a budget, that was just turnkey brought, ten million.
That was just a quote, um, the reduction to six million over three years, I don't know where that comes from.
But, I'll, I'll tell you the problem I have with that, is because there looks to be, I don't know, how many is that, twenty high school kids that signed that letter? I don't know how many kids were on that tour, but if twenty kids were told that there's a six million dollar plan over the course of three years, then that's twenty people that got that information, that's gonna get regurgitated, and I, I just have no idea where that came from, because I've never heard that.
I, I don't know either, so, like I said, I think stock was told when we first got the land was, yeah, ten million turnkey.
Yeah.
I don't know where the six million over three years is referencing to. I don't know if it's.
Yeah.
It's hard to go off of this.
I'm just, I mean, that, that's, that's just.
I was gonna say, yeah, maybe it's a lot of some.
Let's, let's hope their takeaway is, if you wanna be successful, you have to be willing to put in a lot of hours. Let's hope that's their takeaway. Yeah. Yeah.
There you go. Alright, this, yeah. If it's part of our talking though, too, make sure it's not this kind of issue.
If, has anybody on the council heard of the six million, three-year plan?
Nope.
So if we haven't heard of it, I don't think it should be repeated to high schools.
Well, you know, Jesse's not here to defend himself.
No, I, I'm just curious, I'm not.
Question to ask him, I agree absolutely.
I'm just curious, if anybody knew where that came from, because I hadn't heard it, so.
I would say every other vote on there is a fact, um, and that's one that is questionable.
Alright, other things under court comments, we've got three thank you notes that we'll pass around, please get these ready from the last council meeting. There's a thank you to Hartford Area Fire and Rescue, this is all during, during the ice and everything, the power outage. One to sue out the energy, and another two sun jam, so we'll pass those through, and let everybody sign those. And I believe we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal.
So. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?